We have Commissioner Washington on audio.
Good morning, everyone.
Vice Chair, we have you and me, and I think we have our quorum. So let us begin. Good morning, everybody. The time is ten of six, and I call the February first, 2024 Planning Board Meeting to order. Give me one sec while I fix my own technology here. Okay. We are joined by our Vice Chair Dorothy Bailey. Good morning.
Good morning.
And we are also joined by Commissioner Washington.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Please note that the deadline for all participant pre-registration and for all submission of materials and exhibits was twelve noon on the Tuesday before this planning board meeting. Registered speakers may join the meeting with a link provided in the email, which is provided by the Plan Board Office, or may listen by phone by utilizing the call-in number, which is provided in the email. And of course, anyone may tune in to watch the planning board meeting via live stream. If you wish to speak or become a person of record, you can use the online form. It must be referenced on the screen for you. In addition to the commissioners, we are joined by our Senior Counsel, Melissa Coleman. Good morning, Ms. Coleman. And we are also joined by Jessica Jones, our Planning Board Administrator. Good morning, Ms. Jones. And we have Ron Adfort.
Very good morning.
And James Hunt, the Division Chief for the Development Reuse Division. Good morning, James. We are also joined by staff members Kenneth Flanagan and Ryan Crowder, having us with technology behind the scenes. We will honor our agenda today for the public and for commissioners. We have a number of legislative items. We have one personal record item, and then there's only one item on our regular agenda, which is a request for continuance. But let us start with the, actually, we're going to start with the item two. I would look for a motion to approve the draft minutes of January twenty five, 2024.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman. Second?
A motion by Commissioner Washington, a second by Vice Chair Bailey. Discussion. The discussion, I'll call the role Commissioner Washington.
Vote aye.
Vice Chair Bailey.
Vote aye.
Vote ayes. Well, the ayes have a three zero. Next item on our agenda, again, these are legislative updates where most of them we're looking for action on the board. We will turn to our General Counsel, Ms. Borden. I believe she will be assisting us this week. She will be. Good morning, Ms. Borden. And I will have you take over and run through these with us, and I assume we'll take them up one by one and look for action on each one. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I am Deborah Borden, General Counsel for the Commission. And I'm going to start us off with the easy ones. So as promised, you know, we have a lot of affordable housing bills this year, and we are doing our best to make sure that we champion the ones that fulfill our mission and that are fitting into our master plan goals. So the first one I have for you today is Senate Bill 199. It is Affordable Housing Land Trusts: Authority to Establish Condominium Regimes. It's very simple. And there already exists something called an Affordable Housing Land Trust in the state of Maryland. It is a funding regime, a funding mechanism for affordable housing. And this bill simply allows those types of land trusts to utilize a condominium regime for the affordable housing that it supports. So generally, you must get legislative authority in order to be able to establish condominium regimes for this kind of housing, and this would allow that flexibility. We think it's a good idea, and we hope that you can support it. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sorry, let me, questions for our counsel on this item? The only thing I'd say is just to be clear, you listed the Senate bill number as cross-listed as House Bill HB 0013. This is the same bill?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So commissioners, if there's no further questions, then I would look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt staff's recommendation in support of Senate Bill 199 and House Bill 13.
Second?
A motion by Commissioner Washington, a second by Vice Chair Bailey. No discussion. I will call the role Commissioner Washington.
I vote aye.
Vice Chair Bailey.
Vote aye.
I vote ayes. Well, the ayes have a three zero. All right, next?
Next, we have House Bill 28. House Bill 28 would increase the annual registration fees for vehicles in the state of Maryland. And what it does is it ties the registration vehicle increase to the weight classification of each vehicle. In Montgomery County, they had, very recently, in 2023, approved a pedestrian master plan. And one of the recommendations in the pedestrian master plan was to look at vehicular mass heavier vehicles are more likely to severely injure or kill pedestrians. Also, heavier vehicles inflict more damage on the state's roadways. And so by scaling the vehicle registration fees to vehicle weight, we recommended that legislation would, legislation like this would help to pay for their impacts on the roadway system and also maybe provide a bit of a disincentive for the purchase of these larger, heavier vehicles in order to improve public safety. So this was a recommendation of a very recent master plan that was approved, and we hope that you can support it.
Questions, commissioners? No questions. I will look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the recommendation of staff in support of House Bill 28.
Second?
A motion by Commissioner Washington, a second by Vice Chair Bailey. No discussion. I will call the role Commissioner Washington.
Vote aye.
Vice Chair Bailey.
Vote aye.
I vote ayes. Well, the ayes have a three zero. And let me just say, I like this bill. I think that's a great idea. All right, next?
Okay. Next is House Bill 135. This is also a transportation-related bill. It deals with pedestrian and bicycle safety. We have actually prepared some more detailed comments on this bill, as well as some suggested edits or amendments. And we have submitted that to you. Yes, we did. And so I can touch on those very quickly. Some of those are just suggestions to tighten up the nomenclature that the bill is using so that we're all talking about the same thing when we talk about pedestrian walkways, sidewalks, et cetera. And some of it, some of it is also suggestions on, you know, the more detailed and substantive issues in the bill. But we do think this bill is a great idea. We want to support it, and we have already discussed our amendments with the sponsor, and he is very open to them. Do you have any particular questions or?
I wouldn't mind just even just a few highlights for the public as well as us, just to highlight a few of the things that we are recommending as amendments, the non-tactical ones, some of the substantive ones.
Okay, we can do that. Sorry, I'm just getting my. Here we go. Okay, so we have. We have suggested that they mash up the definitions. For instance, a bicycle way, pedestrian walkways, they're defined in different places in the code. We simply have suggested that they use the same terminology that's used elsewhere in the code. Other recommendations are that they replace the use of the term separated or buffered bicycle ways with bicycle paths. Because again, it just, it matches up with other uses of that term elsewhere in the code. Let's see, anything else that we've talked about? We've suggested that when identifying locations for sidewalks and bicycles, bicycle paths along or across state highways, MTA should consider local master plan recommendations to ensure that there are no conflicts. We just think that that's a best practice. It doesn't require them to go with our local recommendations, but it does require them to look at them to just make sure that they don't, they're not creating a conflict or a problem. Let's see.
That was actually important, and I thought was worth noting, worth highlighting, because it builds off of the work of the Planning Department quite nicely.
Right. And that's really about it for our amendments.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, commissioners? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the recommendation of staff and approve House Bill 135 to include the proposed amendments as articulated by staff and is also in the record.
Second?
A motion by Commissioner Washington, a second by Vice Chair Bailey. No discussion. I will call the role Commissioner Washington.
Vote aye.
Vice Chair Bailey.
Vote aye.
I vote ayes. Well, the ayes have a three zero. All right, next?
Next is, let's see, House Bill 457. This is the synthetic turf bill. We have talked about this bill now, I think, for three years running. This bill is sponsored by, excuse me, Delegate Layman, and we have worked closely with her to work on the language and and give her background on synthetic turf, working with synthetic turf, getting it installed, what it entails. And then what do we do when, you know, the life cycle of the synthetic turf has expanded, you know, what do we do in terms of disposing of it? You know, ultimately, the concern is that we don't want synthetic turf to end up in our landfills because it is full of chemicals and things that we don't actually want to go into a landfill. We want to encourage recycling of these materials. And so the first step in that is to require reporting, the reporting of the chain of custody. So, you know, when a company comes in to remove synthetic turf because it's old, what are they then doing with that turf? So this is what this bill is about. It's simply a reporting requirement for any custodians of the synthetic turf so that we can start to track. And then hopefully, start to, you know, in the future, require some sort of recycling of this material. So we, both parks departments have been very involved in this, in this legislation, and so we are in support without any amendments.
Commissioners, any questions? No questions. I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the recommendation of staff and approve or move for approval of House Bill 457.
Second?
A motion, a second motion by Commissioner Washington, a second by Vice Chair Bailey. No discussion. I will call the role Commissioner Washington.
Vote aye.
Vice Chair Bailey.
Vote aye.
I vote ayes. Well, the ayes have a three zero.
Okay. Last but very not least, bill that we have today is SB 484. This is the Governor's Land Use Bill referencing affordable housing and zoning density. We gave you a little preview of it last week. We have been working feverishly on comments as well as proposed amendments to this bill. And I have with me on the line Rich Hall, who had joined the Planning Department, I think it was basically a month ago, not too long ago. But Rich has wonderful experience and has helped us greatly with this bill, not just in reaching out to the state, but also in parsing the language. And so I wanted to see if he could, yes, join us, and there he is, to go through some of the amendments that we are proposing. And we can both, of course, answer any questions you might have. Rich?
Yeah, and Rich, one second, because I'm not sure commissioners, if you've met Rich Hall before, but you may remember him from his previous roles. Former Secretary of Planning for the state, is that the right title?
That's right, Mr. Chairman.
That's right. So we have a real coup with his expertise. He's already added tremendous value in the weeks that he's been here. So I'm glad that you're all getting a chance to meet him. And take it away.
Thank you, and good to meet the rest of you virtually. I believe I've met a couple of you, and 3D, as I like to say, in real life in the past. But again, happy to be here. And Deborah, I suppose I will just briefly go through our comments and leave it up to the board to see if they have questions and discussions and such, right?
Thank you.
And can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
And then I assume you all have a copy in the package of the comments. And okay, so I'm going to skim down through that. Overall, I think you have this basic background. This is a governor's bill, and it seeks to help create supply of affordable housing, primarily focused on rail stations and on properties of our previous state campuses. And we have one of those in the county. In Prince George's County, in Montgomery, I believe there's one there as well. Deborah, I'm not quite sure about Montgomery County. And I guess the other sort of overall comment that I'm making is between the two counties, Prince George's and Montgomery, we have half of the rail stations that are listed statewide. So again, no, that should be a surprise to you all, but then that's some sort of embargo contact. So the, this bill is focused on these parts of the state, so a fairly limited scope, but it affects the commission's two counties pretty directly. So just starting off, one of the things we always sort of look for is when does the bill take effect, right? So the current language as a standard usually state legislation is October 1, and that simply won't be enough time that we're asking for, at least giving us time till until December of 2024, so the end of this calendar year, at least that long. If this bill is successful, it'll take some time to bring our codes into compliance with the state bill. I know Mako has asked, I think, even for longer than that. And just another comment. And I don't know if you have Mako's comments in your package or not. We can certainly get them to you. They have published them, Mako's comments on this bill and draft amendments. But a number of our comments and requests for amendments track with what Mako was saying. Some of them are a little more detailed and different, but they do a lot of parallel comments. That's first comment. Second comment has to do with definition, kind of technical piece in a way, has to do with manufactured home versus modular. This is another comment that pairs with a Mako comment, and we're asking to use the term modular home. That's more relevant to our codes and practice, not only in this county, but other counties as well. So that's sort of a technical comment. And we think that's important because it has to do with how, what exactly what kind of product we're talking about and being assembled on the site on the foundation. And so that's the second comment there, listed Section 4-104. The other group, and feel free to stop me anytime, Mr. Chairman.
Then keep going.
Okay. The next is definitions. So that's midway through the second page of our comments, and these are mostly technical. And definitions have, can really affect the, what the bill affects. So we think that the, some of the way the bill was constructed wasn't fully consistent of how many ordinances are written and such. So the first one has to do with defining affordable drawing unit. And in this case, we're trying to make sure that we're obviously sensitive to what the administration is looking for at state level, but making it work and what we have in place. And we want to make sure this doesn't conflict with, with MPDUs that some other counties have, moderate-priced drawing units. The other piece has to do with defining mixed use, and we think that their definition was too narrow. We don't make sure that it covers what we consider in Prince George's County and other counties as well, what mixed use really is. So it's just trying to make that definition fit with ours of mixed use, and actually has the effect of making it a little broader. And now, because issue with townhouses, we thought, and this, again, this, both of these track with what Mako was commenting as well, not exactly the same, but the same type of comments on those definitions for townhouses. Their definition was too narrow and probably not accurate for how most local governments define townhouses, including capturing within the definition. Townhouses are set up in a condominium-type regime instead of single lock ownership, in addition to single ownership. Go down to the bottom of that second page, 7-502. Again, a lot of this is trying to further refine, pin down some of the broad language and not well-defined language in some instances in the bill. And you can see, they're trying to define unreasonable limitation or requirement. They didn't really define it. We're trying to help them to define it better so that it isn't so broad and wide open of what that means and how it would be applied and how it actually would be used once this bill, if it's successful, would get implemented. So again, trying to tighten down without changing really the meaning of what the administration was looking for, but trying to tighten down, be more specific. Since this will be law that passes, and so that's really important. And we, again, this also tracks with some of the comments from Mako as well. And we have almost everything in here. We have talked to the administration about, I guess Deborah mentioned earlier, we did have a fruitful meeting with the Secretary of the State Farm Housing and Community Development and the Deputy, the Governor's Deputy Legislative Liaison and some other related staff on the state level. So many of these things, if not all of them, are not a surprise, and initially seemed, they seemed receptive to these. So the next part, that's sort of second bullet, under that Section 7502 piece at the bottom of page two and going to top of your page three there, has to do with how the density bonus is defined and articulated. And a big piece of this bill, really the main driver of it, is requiring that local governments allow a 30% density bonus and for what they call qualified projects. So those are qualified projects from within a mile of the rail stations. And also on kind of three categories, the rail station piece, and I'm sorry to make this clear at the beginning. Also, areas are controlled by, owned, controlled by a nonprofit. And on these state campuses, for us, that's the Glendale Hospital. I know there's been several projects proposed, projects proposed for that hospital, but that would, that's the one campus, a former state campus that's listed in the bill for Prince George's County. So what this bill overall does would require the local, enable, allow a 30% density bonus. And those areas, if 25% of units being built are at 60% AMI, and for the nonprofit-controlled properties, that'd be 50% of the units that would be built. If they get that density bonus, if they build a density bonus, would get that 50% of the unit, they get to have to be a 60% AMI. So that's, that's, I guess, one of the things to keep in mind is that's a, I guess you could say in a way, a sizable ask in a way, building a 60% AMI. And that's supposedly the theory in this legislation, is that's countered by the density bonus. How the development community will respond to that, I guess we'll see. But, you know, and that's, that, but I just wanted to clarify what the bill really seeks to do. And that's important because the definitions that I was just going to talk about there, sort of that top of page three in your handout, really tries to better define how that density bonus would apply and make more clear what the, how you calculate it. So for example, if you look at the bullets there, suggested language, it, making it clear that that's a bonus as high as on top of what the local government allows, even if the local government allows bonus densities. And I think as you all well know, both the counties, Montgomery, Prince George's, have densities that can be increased under certain conditions, especially in many of our zones around the rail stations. So that's that first bullet there. Then also, another clarifying piece is to have an area zoned exclusively for a qualified project, again, trying to tighten up the language, also including middle housing units. There's language in the bill that talks about middle housing, ADUs and duplexes and such. So it's trying to clarify that where those areas can get the bonus density as well. Third bullet, and areas for non-residential use. So even though there may be, it's enabling residential areas that are zoned for non-residential use. So I'm trying to articulate how the, if it's a qualified project, and those are the projects that meet those criteria I mentioned before, how you would, if it's a zone that doesn't have a residential use in it, you don't know what the density is to begin with. So what it's saying is trying to create a benchmark, I guess you could say, that the density cannot see what the highest residential density is in that jurisdiction. So again, again, the third bullet, this applies to non-residential zones because if there was, there's nothing to measure the density bonus on. So we're giving it something to measure that bonus on there. And then the fourth bullet for mixed uses, the, the bonus, trying to get there at the, clarifying that 30% increase has to do with the square footage. So we're not only talking about units, but also square footage. So there's more ways to apply it. Section 503, Section 7-503, the middle of page three there, is to look at asking the change from the, from 40 years in the bill to 30 years for guaranteeing the price points for the affordable units. So 30 years is the more standard language. So that's, that's what that piece is about. And then there's bullets there are seeking to clarify where that applies. And the third bullet there is trying to better define the rail stations to include Metro Rail System Station, because there's all kinds of different stations, as you all know. And what we got from the state was pretty generic, just rail stations. So again, trying to better define the rail stations, the types of rail stations. The next, the last stat there on page three is to carry forward some of the comments we made before. And to make it clear that it's not, doesn't only apply to the single-family residential zones. Yeah, so that's what that one does, and that they clarify that the bonus. And that they clarify that the bonus density is on top of what the local government allows. So you can see the four bullets below that is how we're, you know, implementing that broader suggestion. Recommendations with a suggestive language for the amendments, and there's some bullets there. Again, clarifying how the bonus density works, it's on top of what the local government already allows, that's what the bill is really about. And may include middle housing. And it applies to the broader type of residential zones. So that takes you over to the top of page four. Also the some of how the state bill references of different zones. We're trying to make sure it matches up with how we looked at mixed use. So that's part of what we're trying to do there as well, again, some more clarifying type things. On section seven five oh four. This has to do with better defining one of the categories I mentioned in which the bill would apply easily, nonprofit properties that are owned or controlled by a nonprofit. And so trying to clarify what that means, and and you can see the subbullets there for that part. And then also it's it's under under control of a nonprofit. And also deed restriction, deed restricting. Again, trying to better define the nonprofit component of the bill. The next first stat of comments there on the seven dash five oh four is to remove the restrictions for middle housing and to not only limit it to single-family zones. Matt releases some comments that are made before. So I think their intention was to do just this, that they were focused on applying it and fill single-family only zones. So you can see the subbullets there to get at that and the specific language that we're recommending to them. And I won't go through each one of those, but that's what this generally seeks to do. Seven dash five oh five is trying to better define from a broadly stated goal almost, but it's it's in the bill. So we're trying to add, you know, some better definition to that. And then to to remove a very general part of that definition could be applied very, very, very broadly. You see there, that's how once remove the term similar requirement. So the requirements that can't be used, be unreasonable are listed, but they, there's a list in the bill has to do with height and bulk and some of those typical zoning type requirements. So you can't, you know, abuse those those types of requirements to limit affordable housing. But then they finish that out of this list and and the bill that says or similar requirements. So we just thought that was way too wide open, and so that seeks to. Going to the bottom of page four, seven dash five oh six. For, it's had to do with how many public hearings are allowed. And again, we understand the goal. You know, I don't think anyone wants to have more public hearings than is necessary. And what should we try to make, what's written in the bill, which says no more than one public hearing for each of the bodies, planning board, council, historical review board, and and so on. And so we're trying to explain to them that in some cases, because the letter codes were, we're not the only county with this issue, that sometimes there are more than one public hearing. And sometimes that because of the way a the applicant is bringing forward a a project. They may, and and the processing, there are different components of their project. They may actually need or want more than one public hearing. So we're trying to thread that needle, like us, trying to understand, accommodate what the state is after by limited public hearings, but trying to carve out a a way that will work for us. So you can see this suggested language here, this is near the top here. Sorry. Oh, near the top of page five, you can see that bullet saying, again, we're trying to, this is suggested language. Except as otherwise provided or required by state law, a local government may not require that a qualified project that is subtitled be subject to more than one public hearing for each required development application before each of the filing and following where those bodies that were listed. So that's, again, we're trying to accommodate what the state is after, but make it work in our system. That, next one there, ten dash one oh three. That's carrying forward a a recommendation that we started with when I started through this list here. And that's modular homes, prefer that term, again, Mako does as well, instead of manufactured homes. And the last piece has to do with a part of the bill that basically gets at public facilities, adequate public facilities and not wanting, not it it prohibits adequate public facilities from limiting developments that are affordable housing that are funded by the state. And what we're trying to do is to, again, accommodate most of what the state wants there. But to further refine what they're after and to focus it on the impact taxes for transportation and schools. But exempting them from the the local impact taxes. But but also make sure that they are subject to adequate public facilities law. Because, you know, whether it's affordable or or market rate housing, we feel that they still need public facilities, adequate public facilities. So that's that last bullet there. So I went through this kind of quickly, I think. And happy to take any questions or, you know, Deborah can elaborate or just whatever the pleasure of of the board is, but thank you.
Thank you for that, Rich. I mean, the only thing I would say, Commissioners, you can see the level of detail that we've been going into related to this. And it's because we want to be very supportive of the governor's initiatives here, and there's a whole lot of detail. There's all sorts of ways at which it impacts us. We are respectful that the government, this is a signature initiative for the governor, and we want to be supportive, and we just want to make sure they get it right. So a lot of staff time has gone into this from department's team. And I feel like we've, you know, we've got a good message here. Questions for Mr. Hall, Ms. Borden?
No question. Now, I was gonna say no questions, but but thank the team for the level of detail and review that's gone into this.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, there's no further questions than I would look for in motion, Commissioners.
Mister Chairman, I move that we accept the recommendation of staff in support of House Bill five three eight and companion bills, Senate Bill four eight four, and that we transmit to include the proposed amendments and comments as just outlined by staff and include as and it is also included in the record.
Second.
I'm motion my Commissioner Washington, second by Vice Chair Bailey. There's no discussion, I will call the roll Commissioner Washington.
I vote aye.
Vice Chair Bailey.
Vote aye.
I vote ayes, well, the ayes have it three zero. Thank you, team. Thanks for all the work on these. There's a lot going on in Annapolis this year.
Yes, there is. I'll see you next week.
That concludes our legislative items. We're gonna go to item three C in our agenda, this is the Parks and Rec item. We have River View Park Vista Grant of Permanent Easement for Storm Drain System. We have Mr. Sun is gonna be presenting on this item. This is an action item, so staff is looking for our approval. Mr. Sun, take it away.
Good morning, Chair, chairship your own fellow planning board members. Here today to request approval for granting our post-storm easement at our River View Park. Next slide, please. River View Park is located on River View Road, approximately one half mile west of Fort Washington Road. Next slide. This is a developed community park, which includes a ball field, playground, picnic areas, tennis courts, parking lot, and a new dog park. Next slide, please.
I'll thank you on behalf of Commissioner Geraldo for the dog park and that's the cheer.
I'm sure he's very excited about that. Prince George's County Department of the Environment, DOE, has implemented a capital improvement program and this to way to address the flooding issues in the Broadwater Estates area. Two thousand and two, the commission granted an easement on the western corner of the park up along this the way, as shown. Next slide, please. And if you'll go one more slide, please, thank you. Prince George's County is now in need of a second easement. The northern portion of the park, as shown here in yellow. The easement is actually quite small, totals five hundred and seventy-eight square feet. Is located on a park property parcels fifty-three and parcel A. There will be no cost considerations for the granting of this easement. DPR staff recommends approval of this grant of easement so that the county can implement its capital improvement project. Are there any questions?
Rich, is there questions for staff?
No questions.
There are none, I would look for a motion.
Mister Chairman, I move approval of the grant of permanent easement for storm drain system related to River River View Park Vista. Second.
I'm motion my Commissioner Washington, second by Vice Chair Bailey. On discussion, this will go to the full commission, correct, Mr. Sun?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no discussion, for discussion, I will call the roll Commissioner Washington.
I vote aye.
Vice Chair Bailey.
Vote aye.
I vote ayes, well, the ayes have it three zero. Thank you, Mr. Sun.
Thank you.
And next we'll go to our regular agenda item. We have item five zoning map amendments, ZMA twenty twenty-two dash oh five Hyde Landing. This item was continued from the planning board meeting of January eleventh, and this is a request for a continuance to February fifteenth twenty twenty-four. I believe there are no issues with this, but we'll hear from Ms. Lockhart and then Mr. Tedesco.
Doing a quick sound check, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, great. Good morning, Mister Chair and members of the planning board. For the record, I am Dominique Lockhart with the zoning section. Item number five on the agenda is zoning map amendment ZMA dash two zero two two dash zero zero five titled Hyde Landing, which requests to rezone the property from the legacy comprehensive design zone to the residential plan development zone. Staff has requested a continuance to the February fifteenth planning board hearing date to allow additional time to further address required findings for the RPD zone. The applicant is in agreement with the continuance, and staff recommends approval of this request for continuance. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lockhart. Before we get to Mr. Tedesco, let the record show that we are joined by Commissioner Geraldo in the minute or two that we have left during this meeting.
Good morning, I'm so sorry.
No worries at all. To know that a dog park was just approved for a and and Commissioner Washington, shout out. Mister Tedesco, turn to you, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Mister Chairman, members of the planning board, Matthew Tedesco on behalf of the owner applicant. We have really nothing further to add, just want to thank Ms. Lockhart and Mister Hunt as back to this application. I believe this is the third continuance, but I believe we all are very hopeful that this is the last continuance. And so we look forward to bringing this case before you all collectively on the fifteenth, so just in two weeks. With that, we have no objection and respectfully request approval of the staff's request for a continuance to February fifteenth. And like I said, we have been working very, very hard, as you can imagine, on a project of this magnitude. And just want to thank staff for its working with us and kind of making sure we're dotting all the i's and crossing the t's. And so with that, Mister Chair, we look forward to the fifteenth and hopefully, assuming this is approved for the continuance. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe we have anyone signed to speak on this from the public. It's just a request for continuous, but okay, all right, good. So there's nothing else before us on this, Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Mister Chairman, I move that we approve staff's request to continue ZMA dash two zero two two dash zero zero five to planning board hearing date of February fifteenth two thousand and twenty-four. And I would also note that in staff's technical report, it references the applicant's request for a continuance, but continuance, but I believe this is a staff request. So we just might want to, we probably want to make sure we tighten that language up.
All right, staff noted.
Noted, Mister Chair. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, no, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Washington, a second by Vice Chair Bailey, discussion on the motion. No discussion, I will call the roll Commissioner Washington.
Vote aye.
Vice Chair Bailey.
Vote aye.
Commissioner Geraldo. You're on mute. I don't know, give us a thumbs up or something. There we go. I vote ayes, well, the ayes have it four zero. So this will be continued to February fifteenth. Thank you, Mister Tedesco, thank you, Ms. Lockhart. And I believe that concludes all the items for today's agenda. Mister Hunt, any further business to come before us today?
Mister Chair, there are no additional items before the planning board today. I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you. So without objection, Commissioners, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for your time and your patience with our technology issues today. Everyone have a good day.
Have a good rest of the day.